Matt.
Councilmember Machesek.
Present.
Councilmember Nielsen.
Yes.
Council, City Council has one vacancy, so we have three. We have a quorum.
Great. Thank you, Bessie Jo. And Melanie will be joining shortly and will give us four.
Mayor Giles.
Yes, Michelle.
I just got a message. Oh, great. It sounds like you have some public members there. I wasn't sure if they were locked out or not. But it sounds like they're in.
I had, so Michelle, we do have Eric from the public here. Believe he's with the Lands Trust.
Craig.
And Craig, excuse me.
I apologize.
Craig from the Land Trust. And the door was open at 5:30. I've been here in the building since 5:30.
Okay, great.
So that, other than Sherri, who is in the, Sherri Mopin is here with me in the same meeting room, and City Clerk, Bessie Jo Wagner. And that's, that is the group here at American Legion Hall. So Sherri, do you want to do just an official roll call for your notes?
I am present physically here. And Dave Bingaman.
I'm present online.
And El Hasberg.
Present and online.
All right. Thank you, County Commissioners. This is a joint work session with the Valley County Board of Commissioners and the City of McCall, City Council. We have five elements in our work session. Our first item is a presentation, an update from the Idaho Department of Lands on a current and proposed management practices. And we've allotted approximately 30 minutes to this topic. And let's see, I think Scott saw your picture up there a little earlier. Are you still online with us?
Still here.
Scott from IDL, would you introduce yourself and give us your presentation, please?
Sure. My name is Scott Corkle. I'm the area manager at the Payette Lake Supervisor Area in McCall for the Department of Lands. And the McCall Endowment Land Plan, I've been heavily involved and then a little bit lighter involved over time. This has actually started in 2010 when we started looking at disposing of the residential properties around Payette Lake. So this is nothing new that we've been working on. And some recent proposals, I'll probably hit the fast forward button a little bit on some of it, which is good, to get some things moving. And tonight, I'm not going to be able to really share the plan with you because we have not presented that to the land board yet. And so I'm going to bring up a timeline, kind of show you where we've been and where we're going, and kind of what that looks like. We're having this meeting one week from now. I think we'd have a lot more to talk about. But until we present this plan before the board members, we don't think it's appropriate to start presenting it because it could change based on their feedback. So, so if I can try to share here, I'm not great on teams, but I'll do my best here. Let's see if this will work.
Nice. There we go.
Did that work?
Yep.
Awesome. Okay. So I guess I'll start from, from recent. I think everybody's kind of up to speed on where we've been through the summer and the past land board meetings. So last week, we presented what we're going to call our strategy. It's not our written plan yet. We really, we put together an outline of our strategy of what the department is going to recommend to the board. And we presented that to land board staff last week. We received some feedback on that, made some minor changes. And then over, since that meeting, we're trying to receive more feedback from the staff and as many land board members as we can get in. To my knowledge, we've only reached out to, or had conversations with one board member to this point, kind of presenting the overall look of it. And just to kind of give some background, you know, we're really focusing in on that area of impact around this, around the lake. That's, the lands outside of that, in the McCall proper, if we want to take all the endowment land down to, you know, Patty Flat Road and that area, is already under a plan. It's our forest asset management plan, which we implemented, we did it five years. And so we implemented that last year. And basically what that is, is it's our primary plan for our forest management. And we do inventory and, and harvest models to figure out what is the appropriate harvesting and regeneration strategy for those pieces of ground. So we've already implemented that on the rest of that ground. So it's already under a plan. So we don't anticipate having any recommendations going forward to change that. That was already approved by the land board in 2019, or 2018, excuse me. So we feel like those lands are already under a management plan approved by the board. So we're really focusing in on stuff around the lake. And so next Tuesday, we will be presenting this strategy to the land board. And at that point, I'm sure we'll be getting some feedback from the board at the meeting. And they may choose to want to, you know, do some more looking at it and give us more feedback after that. But at that point, the strategy will be out there for public consumption. And so the board will have a chance to look at it, give immediate feedback. And then we really want to, you know, more than likely engage our stakeholders at that time. You know, and mainly the city of McCall and Valley County are the two, the two big ones there, obviously. So but everybody in the public will have a chance to, to take a look at it, give feedback, what their thoughts are. And we'll kind of go from there. In December, a plan is, is that December, we will have a written plan to bring forward to the board. So that's the, the draft plan that we want to bring to the board. Once again, get feedback from the board first, public after, and, and start dialing this thing in. And then hopefully January, February board meeting, we have an action item that they will be voting on to, to approve a plan moving forward. So that's the timeline where we're at. And, you know, that could change based on the feedback we get on Tuesday. That's going to be the big starter point for us. And when we go into that, obviously, we're hoping to, you know, kind of have some pre approvals in place before we go there. But that's, that's kind of where we're at. In a nutshell, as far as the plan itself, like I said, I was involved pretty heavily at the beginning. And I did help present last week, but after that, I'm not in the loop. So that plan could have changed. So I, I wouldn't want to speak on anything that I'm not 100% sure of what it still entails at this point.
Scott, how many acres?
So if that'll take any questions.
Scott, this is Mayor Bob. How many acres are you talking about in this plan around the lake? Could you give us a rough figure?
About 5,000. And really, if you dial down into it, we're probably talking about a couple hundred. That's the meat and potatoes of what, you know, those high value properties that are closest to Payette Lake.
Thank you. Sherri, do you want to poll your group and see if there's any questions from commissioners?
Oh, Dave, do you have anything that you'd like clarity on with Scott?
Are they muted or?
Yeah, they can unmute themselves.
Can you hear me?
Okay.
I'm slow, but I'm real steady. Hey, the 5,000 acres that you mentioned, is that in, in any kind of a plan now for forest harvest? Or is that, is that something that could come on the block as well?
Most of it is within our current forest asset management plan that has been identified as primary based timber. So probably about 3,500 acres that falls within that. But it's also been identified as transition land and not that we're going to transition, you know, out of it. But it's, it's not meeting the financial thresholds for timber, for timberland based on the development value of it. So that's kind of the, the thresholds we have to go by. So yeah, some of it is within the FAMP. But, you know, going through this process, some of it could remain that way. If the board decides that we're just going to keep status quo and keep cutting timber on it, then that's what we're going to do. So that's, that part of that is in the 5,500 acres or 5,000 acres we're talking about.
Thank you.
Scott, are there any outs, this is Sherri Mopin. Are there any outstanding leases on any of this ground?
You mean as far as stuff that got stopped in the hopper?
Or commercial that's currently under lease?
We have, yes, we do have leases that are in place right now. Obviously, the Yahoo Corral is one. Elk Springs Outfitters on the east side. I'll probably forget about a bunch of them. But, you know, it's, there's, there's several leases that we had in place that they did not stop based on their previous, previous use. But we also have mineral extraction leases for decorative stone grazing leases. So those are still in place.
Thank you. Dave, do you have any questions?
I don't right now. I just was going to ask about the acreage and, you know, maybe if you could just clarify a little bit, Scott, are we talking kind of roughly the McCall City Impact Zone?
In that 5,000 acres? That's exactly what we're talking about, yes.
Is any of that land outside the impact area? This is Cinda.
No, at this point, we consider that land already under our forest asset management plan. So it was already approved by the board.
This is, this is Bob Giles. Is there, are there any questions from City Council? Let me start with Mike. Are you, do you have any questions or any, any comments you'd like to share with Scott Corkle?
Oh, yeah. Thanks. Yeah. So Scott, when you're talking about a plan that's not formalized, but a plan that's being considered by the land board, are we talking about, is the land board putting out like a request for proposals? Or is it specific to the, the proposal that Alec Williams is putting forth? Or can you give him, give us a little more understanding of what the, the plan that's being considered?
Well, I could tell you from the agency standpoint. I can't speak for the board because they haven't seen. And basically what we've done is done an outline of a strategy that we feel we can move forward with that can be, that gives the land board options. And that was kind of what we went into this with. None of our presentation will have anything to do with Trident's proposal. That is standing on its own, and that is a board decision whether they want to entertain that any further. This plan really has nothing to do with, with Alec Williams or Trident's proposal. It's, it's a standalone plan we've been working on for a very long time. Like I said, ever since we started disposing, disposing of the residential lease sites.
So the, so kind of the strategy plan that you're talking about, that could be an action item in January or February, that's something that looks like by no, late, no, well, sometime in those December perhaps, that stakeholders, interest groups, the public would be able to look at and then provide comment on and have an understanding of what the, what IDL is considering then.
November 17th, it will be out there for consumption at the next, at the November land board meeting. So next week is when that's going to be presented, and that's when you can get your hands on it and chew on the meat of that thing and see if there's, you know, if it aligns with, you know, whatever you guys come up with tonight or, you know, talk about it. But it'll, it'll give you a lot more things to, to look at and chew on going forward as far as comments. So how the board wants to structure that stakeholder outreach, where that, that'll come from the board. Our, our recommendation is probably going to be doing individual outreaches or, or, you know, with the Valley County and the city number, you know, that, those are the primary ones. And then, you know, the interest groups that have popped up since the Trident proposal came up. Obviously, we've been in conversations with them, Payette Land Trust, you know, all the major stakeholders that have shown an interest in this. But how that'll look, we're going to let the board kind of drive that and what they're comfortable with.
So then, as of November 17th, will it be somewhat obvious to get on the land board website and find like the download of that? Or how will we?
It should be posted probably by Friday of this week in our agenda items. So you'll get a preview of it then. But there won't be any more, you know, we'll, we'll run it before the board. And like I said, it could, it could look very different by the end of the land board meeting, depending on the feedback we get from the land board.
And so then, the question previously about leases. So that's probably getting into something specific when we haven't looked at the big picture yet. But when we talk about leases, the idea generally speaking, as far as you understand, would be that leases, no matter what happens, would continue. So for instance, stolen livestock company renting their sheep through the, through the state land, and that would all continue regardless of what happened. The Payette Lake Trail lease with Simba, that would continue. The horse packing outfitters, those types of, those types of leases would all continue as far as you know? Or do we have any idea?
That would be our recommendation from the agency, that they all continue.
Well, that's helpful. And really appreciate you being here and providing us with information and giving the public an opportunity to hear too. It's, it's really helpful and it's really appreciated, Scott.
Well, thank you for inviting me.
That's all I have, Bob.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Scott. Let's go to Colby.
Yeah, thanks for taking the time to be here, Scott. I appreciate it. I guess the only question I have is, have there been any conversations or discussions about changing the fundamental operation of IDL and the mandates that seem to not be real awesome? I'm assuming there have been no, no discussions on changing that, but.
Well, Attorney General Wozden did make a statement at a recent land board meeting, kind of discussing that about, you know, the, the talk about constitutional amendments. And in this case, since this was a grant from the federal government, this is actually an act of Congress to change that constitutional mandate. And at this point, at least Attorney General Wozden made it very clear that he has no interest in going down that road. And it is a big funder for public schools. So that's, that's, that's the, the rub we run into going forward is remembering that the reason the land board and the Department of Lands exist is because of that mandate. So Attorney General Wozden made it very clear that is, that is going to, to drive their decision making. It won't be the only factor, obviously. It has to be, you know, make it work for everybody involved as much as possible. But he, he made it pretty clear on that, that, no, he was not interested in going down that road. And I would, I'd venture to guess that most board members are not at this point, based on the feedback.
Great. Thanks for answering that, Eric. That's super helpful. I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Colby. So Melanie is, has joined us. Melanie Holmes, Counselor Holmes. She is having some technical difficulty, will not be able to ask questions. But we do have, we do have communication that we can, if there is a vote tonight on any action, we will be able to communicate with her on that. So next up is me. Scott, you are the supervisor of this McCall area. And you said something really interesting about 10 minutes ago. You said you have provided your input. And then there's another group within IDL working on it. Would that be your superiors in Boise or is that up in Coeur d'Alene?
Boise, our real estate team and our executive staff both. Bill Hogenson's kind of been the one on the executive team that has been focused on this project. And Ryan Montoya and his real estate team in the bureau down there have been kind of the driving force behind putting a lot of this together with input from myself and, and my staff.
Thank you. All right. If you could stay online, there might be some questions that come up a little later after the other presentations. But thank you so much for giving us a quick, you know, a good overview, especially about the timeline and what's going on. And we probably will, over the next few weeks, be calling you and asking you for updates on where we can find information on the web.
Right. And, and, you know, I think after next week, we might be reaching out to you to, to schedule some things to sit down and talk about the, the plan itself. So that, that's probably a pretty good possibility.
That would be great. And we would, we would prefer doing that with our county commissioners. I think that'd be real efficient to have, have all of us together on that meeting.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I have to get out of here at 6:30. So unfortunately, I can't stay for the duration.
Well, thank you for joining us first and giving us a good overview. All right. Our next item in the work session is a presentation by the Payette Endowment Lands Alliance. And they also have a half hour that we had scheduled for them. And who is our guest speaker to start that out, Bessie Jo?
We have Judy Anderson and Jeff Masu that will be presenting. And one other person too. I don't remember the third person. So Jeff.
Debbie Faraday.
Oh, and Deb Faraday. Thank you. Sorry about that.
No worries.
Deb, are you going to lead us off?
Yes, I am.
Great, great. Thank you very much. We can see your picture on the screen, so.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right. So before I begin, on behalf of Pella, we would like to thank all of the commissioners and all of the city council members for agreeing to meet this big hairy piece of ground. These 20,000 acres and especially the 550 acres in the impact zone represent, 5,500 acres, excuse me, in the impact zone represent irreplaceable treasures. And their total intrinsic value cannot be calculated. Thank you for being willing to coordinate efforts regarding the endowment lands and thanks for the opportunity to present. The endowment lands contain many favorite huckleberry spots, all those No Tellum Creek spots for finding mushrooms. The cliffs on East Side Drive, the Thinking Spot, walks up Lick Creek Road in the spring when you can't take the snow anymore. I could go on. And along with many of you and those listening by phone, McCall and the area surrounding it evoke feelings of a real connection to place, a true sense of connection to the land. I found a quote that I wanted to share with you. I was reading about a, a small hub of ranchers in the Spokane, Washington area about how they came together. Due to COVID, these ranchers formed an innovative distribution system of bringing food to people in their area. And, and here's the quote, "When people and land aren't seen as separate, but instead as essential and intertwined, then a more resilient landscape is the result." This phrase, essential and intertwined, is how I see our community and its relationship to the endowment lands. They are our daily life. They are important to our recreation based economy. We hike, bike, hunt, fish, berry pick, mushroom pick, snowmobile, backcountry ski, camp. I could go on. And we all feel really lucky to drink in the beauty of each season on these lands. Imagine if these lands were privatized, cut off from public access, and fragmentation of the lands became the norm. So Pella, the Payette Endowment Land Alliance, has been meeting every Friday on Zoom since early July, when the news of a potential land swap made the local paper. Our 11 directors spent time together educating ourselves about the endowment and about the fiduciary responsibility the land board holds. We published a full page ad in the Star News on July 16th with over 650 signatures in opposition to the large scale land swap. The primary shared value that must drive decisions is maintaining the quality of the resources, the land and the water, the living ecosystem. Long-term financial gains set forth in the constitutional mandate can never be achieved by degrading the ecosystem. Dustin Miller, Director of IDL, acknowledged this in his letter to the public several months ago. Given our long-term management mission, we understand that improving the ecological conditions of the lands we manage improves the bottom line for our beneficiaries. And in the 1992 Asset Management Plan, it is clearly stated that, and I quote, "The land board has the responsibility to ensure maximum long-term financial return to the endowment funds while protecting lands and related resources." The 92 plan also recognizes the importance of seeking out input from local stakeholders, stating that "the needs and concerns of other agencies, the community of McCall, Valley County, and the citizens of the state of Idaho will be sought and considered before adoption of the plan." We agree with this statement because the human economy, the wildlife, the health and welfare of the people of McCall, and their drinking water source all depend on the care of that ecosystem, most especially the watershed and the lake. Pella directors have traveled to Boise and we have met with these land board members to date. The Secretary of State, the Attorney General, the State Controller, the governor's staff, as well as staff from the Parks and Rec Department, which oversee Panderosa State Park. Pella has been in communication with the IDL personnel. And we have had several Zoom meetings with Idaho Conservation League, Idaho Wildlife Federation, Backcountry Hunters and Anglers, the Simba Organization, PLT, and a local homeowners association, all opposing large scale sales or swaps of local endowment lands. McCall Endowment Lands and their outcome may be the canary in the coal mine. Other areas of the state will be watching to see what happens here. It may be precedent setting. I remember the governor saying last June that he would be looking to the county and the city leaders for input regarding input and the fate of these lands. Pella would like to offer its cooperation in efforts to communicate to the land board the message to slow down the process, to encourage the formation of a local task force. So the complexities of this matter can be evaluated. Our aim is to preserve and protect in perpetuity the immeasurable beauty and ecology of this area, which in turn directly affects the economy. Pella received solicitations from citizens who are on our email list. And many ideas for solutions to preserve and protect the lands came from citizens and have been explored. Things like easements, leases, inclusion of lands to Panderosa Park, as well as other ideas that Judy and Jeff will talk about. So if I could, I'm going to turn it over to Judy and then Jeff will take over from there. And then we'd like to take any questions or comments that you guys might have for, for Pella.
Thank you, Debbie. That's a great introduction. So I believe Judy is next up. And we'll hold questions until we hear from the three guest speakers from Pella. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. I'm Judy Anderson. I live in Lake Fork. I want to echo Deb's statement that the primary value that must drive decisions about these lands is maintaining the quality of the land and water and the living ecosystem. So IDL and the land board not only have a public trust obligation for the endowment lands, but the lake and the river are also held in state public trust. Essentially, IDL has overlapping public trust obligations. And the endowment lands bordering the lake are integral to its protection and feed the streams and rivers that nourish it. The eutrophication potential of Payette Lake is a very real issue that will be exacerbated by the rising temperatures of climate change. We feel restricting new development on endowment lands around the lake is essential for protecting and fulfilling these public trust obligations. A lake that is degraded will cause devaluation of all property around the lake to the detriment of the water supply, the beneficiaries, the property owners, the city, the economy of McCall, the school system, the Valley County, and the state. Also, what happens to the lake happens downstream to the Payette River and will exacerbate the conditions in Cascade Lake. These endowment lands are vulnerable and under threat. Firstly, they are contiguous. In many places, they border the Payette National Forest. This contiguous landscape provides the connectivity that nourishes habitats. This contiguous landscape provides the connectivity that nourishes habitats, allows for migration of animals, dispersal of seeds and spores, and maintains the biodiversity that is the bulwark of a healthy ecosystem. As Idaho Fishing Game spokesman says, "Animals are needing much bigger landscapes than we ever imagined." We are going to have to think big. The fragmentation caused by development is the enemy of this precious connectivity and can only lead to a loss of biodiversity. Every ecologist will tell you that diversity increases productivity on all landscapes, and the loss of it with fragmentation is a threat to the ability of the ecosystem to maintain itself. These lands are also very vulnerable because they are in the crosshairs of a skyrocketing market for high-end scenic properties, fueled by the inequity in our system and the Federal Reserve policies that have voided the stock market and kept interest rates low. The endowment lands, if there is a tight interpretation of the mandate for maximum financial gain, are sitting ducks. Many see this situation in McCall as a trial one, a trial run for speculators all over the state to transform what has been part of the public commons, land loved by the public for generations, into exclusive rural communities of high-end mansions, turning into a commodity and commercializing what has been free public access for 100 years. An economist told me the words "maximum financial gain" are meaningless as a directive for management of land, that those words have to be accompanied by a moral imperative. Make any sense? Otherwise, if you only want to make the most money, well, why not a luxury whorehouse? Or a munitions factory? Or a marijuana plantation? Or a casino? These are, oh, they're examples, but they illustrate the point. Maximum financial gain needs to be connected to a moral imperative, a standard. The words "long-term" help. Because they are in the Constitution, and they can be interpreted to include protection of the land and improving ecological conditions, as manager of IDL Dustin Miller said. But other states with endowment lands and same mandates have refused to be shackled to those words, "maximum financial gain." The 21st century realities demand more flexibility in land management. So they have added words like in Montana, quote, "a public obligation for the state as land managers to protect and enhance the inalienable right of all Montanans to a clean and healthful environment." Or other states emphasize, quote, "long-term stewardship," rather than just revenue generation. Or rather than requiring the state land board to maximize revenues, the board is required to manage trust lands to produce, quote, "reasonable and consistent income over time." Or one state set up a stewardship trust of about 300,000 acres to preserve long-term returns, and only uses that will protect and enhance the natural values, open space, and wildlife are permitted on those lands. And these states are not having trouble funding public education. We know that IDL uses best management practices on their lands, but what if they were allowed to fully acknowledge and accept the crucial value of ecological processes on developed lands and natural ecosystems? Then we could put more teeth into the long-term part of the mandate, which values stewardship, and that could give us a path out of the trap of developers invoking maximum financial gain to seize lands that we all know are priceless and undefinable in market terms. When I talk about the value of ecological processes, what am I talking about? Well, I'm talking about the real facts of life, nature's operating instructions, the rules of ecosystem, which include absolute interdependence and mutual aid, where everything depends on everything else, interlocking networks where every organism has a special niche, and thus reducing competition and conserving vital energy, and where everything is recycled, waste equals food, and there is a constant redistribution of resources. Many times through the sophisticated billions of miles of fungal networks connecting roots and bringing nutrients and water, especially to those plants and trees in need. It's a health hotline, if you will. Or the promotion of diversity, which will increase abundance, creativity, and maintain resilience in the ecosystem. These are, these are natures, the facts of life, the essential ecological processes that we need to understand, value, and protect. And frankly, use as examples for organizing our own human communities. If you look at all the human agencies and governments that have jurisdiction over that land and watershed, you have IDL, the land board, Valley County, the city, Payette Forest, state parks, the sewer district, Lake Fork Irrigation District, private land donors, and then you have the lake, where the top four to six feet is owned by the city of Payette Irrigation. The bedrock under the lake and the high watermark is in trust with the state, the water regulated by DEQ. It becomes clear that no single entity exists that has a sufficiently large vision to hold the diversity of values and the complexity of the ecosystem in order to guide the management of these lands. There is no alignment in our present system that can translate into the necessary care of this most sacred of trust, divine creation. And that is why it is imperative that we all form coalitions, challenge our thinking, and widen our views to find long-term sustainable solutions. Thank you so much. And I'm going to move to Jeff Musso.
Thank you, Judy. Hey, good evening. My name's Jeff Musso. I'm a resident of McCall, and I'm a director in the Pella organization. Like Deb and Judy, I have a deep love for McCall and for the lands around McCall, including the state endowment lands. I'd like to cover three things with my time this evening. First, I'd like to just build a little bit on what Deb talked about on comments that we heard from the land board members as we talked to them. Second, I'd like to provide two examples, one within the state and one outside of the state, of successful land conservation of towns that had similar issues to ours right now. And the third is, I'd like to just give a little bit of a description on the Pella website that we've just recently issued and some of the resources that are in that that may be helpful to the work that the council and the commissioners are doing. So first of all, from what Deb talked about with the land board meetings over the last month with, I think, four of the, four of the five members. The first thing I'd like to reference is that they really talked about following the constitutional requirements that are within the state constitution and then pounded down through statutes. But a couple of things in there, the wording, "secure the maximum long-term financial return to the institution which it was granted." And they were pretty focused on long-term, so it's not just a sale or a trade or a short-term gain today that needs to be looked at. The second is that no land, no state lands will be sold for less than the appraised price. And they did note, they did note that the first appraisal that was put in, the proposal that arrived in, didn't arrive, but was out there in July, was low. And they also did say, they seemed to infer that any trade would really kind of follow that same, that same logic or that same constitutional language. Couple other things they talked about. They encouraged discussion with Idaho Department of Lands, and I think it was great that Scott was here today and gave his presentation. We have been working with them, as Deb talked about. And they also welcomed us to critique proposals when proposals are submitted. And I think that's open to, that's open to basically anybody that wants to do that, but that's one of the things that we certainly intend to do. They did talk about the land boards made no decision yet on what's to happen with these lands. They talked much about what Scott talked about tonight and putting together that strategic plan for the areas and other plans that they had in place. They also said with kind of the short timeframe, it may be unlikely that the whole thing's decided in December. And you could see from Scott's presentation where you've got strategy in November, you've got a draft plan in December, it may take a little bit longer than that. Last thing they talked about was really getting a proposal in. You know, if we were, if Pella's interested in this, look at the means and how we might produce a proposal. Certainly, that's going to take a stronger coalition than just us, but we're ready to work with others. We're excited, you know, to work with the council and to work with the commissioners on putting together, you know, solutions for these problems. And not just, you know, leases or easements, but also what Judy talked about tonight, which could involve some of the constitutional change and incorporation of things other than just the financial return. So there's two examples I'd like to talk about. There's probably lots of examples of successful land transfers or conservation efforts, but there are two of them that kind of have grabbed our interest of late. So the first one occurred in Blaine County in Idaho, where in 2008, the voters of Blaine County approved Proposition 1. And that was for a land, water, and wildlife program levy that established a two-year levy to protect natural resources and the quality of life valued by area residents there. The ballot language for the levy included a requirement to establish a land advisory board that was made up of local citizens, and their job was to advise the county commissioners on conservation, on proposals, proper investment of, and the proper investment of the levy proceeds. To date, the land, water, and wildlife program, which is formally named now, has successfully put in place five major conservation easements, one large land acquisition, and three land and water restoration projects. So funding for those projects came from the public, public sector, which I talked about with the levy, but they were also to put together large amounts of money from conservation organizations, from foundations, and from private donors that they combined with those public monies to accomplish those projects that I just talked about. The conservation easements, purchases, and leases today equal several thousand acres in Blaine County and some of the, some of the real precious grounds there. More information on that can be found on the Blaine County website. My next example is really if you're hiking around in the San Juan Islands, so this is over in Washington. You'll notice ample evidence of what's called the San Juan County Land Bank. And there's a lot of signs that they've put up on areas that they've been in play protecting and acquiring over several decades. The Land Bank describes its origins on its website as follows. "Throughout the 1980s, the land development, tourism were on the rise, and the county's population was rapidly growing. Facing the loss of places they loved, a diverse group of locals sought a way to save treasured lands and maintain a quality of life. The vision led to the creation of the San Juan County Conservation Land Bank. In 1990, the San Juan County voters approved funding for the Land Bank through a one-time 1% real estate excise tax paid by purchasers of property at closing. The mandate of this organization is to preserve in perpetuity areas in the county that have environmental, agricultural, aesthetic, cultural, historic, scenic, and recreational value, and to protect existing and future sources of potable water." Sounds pretty familiar. From those, we put both of those descriptions and we put the links to the Land Bank and to the Blaine County organization on our website. So just this week, we've been working on, we've been working on a website for quite a while, and this week we were able to publish it. It's an open website, available and open to the public. The address of it is pellamacall.com, so fairly simple that way. It includes a number of things, and I'll just quickly go through these, but it describes what our organization is, what our mission is, tells who our directors are. It provides a good explanation with some of the information that's taken from the Idaho Department of Lands website about what endowment lands are, because it is kind of difficult to understand what they are. They're kind of a special, a special class of lands, and so we decided that was important. We have included maps in there, not only of all the endowment lands within the state of Idaho, but also specifically what the 28,000 acres in the McCall area are, basically section by section on a map. And then we've even gone a little bit further and outlined in our description of areas what the, what the McCall impact zone areas are. So you can kind of see what the acreages are on the west side, the east side, the north end of the lake, and things like, things like that. So we, we hope that's going to be helpful. We explain possible solutions like leases and easements, constitutional changes, things like that, but it's kind of just a laundry list of things to be thinking about as we address issues of private, you know, private ownership of large areas of lands. We also have a photo gallery, and we have some great citizen stories of people on these lands and what these lands mean to them. That's well worth, well worth reading. It'll bring a tear to your eye, I'm sure, because it brought a tear to mine. And lastly, we have a, we have a library. So we set up a library. There's a lot of information and reports, things like that are out there. Say from the University of Idaho Policy Analysis Group, the state, the Lincoln Land Policy Institute, which we've got a report in there on state trust lands in the West, which has some great ideas in. But there's a lot of information in there as we kind of start, you know, maybe to work together that could be useful in outlining things and outlining solutions and seeing what, seeing what other people have thought about this, because the endowment lands have been studied and looked at for a, for a long time. So in closing, I just, Deb and Judy and I, we'd like to say thank you to the city and the county for coming together and really helping to address this really, this really significant issue. The governor said he listens carefully to local representatives' voices, so it's really, it's really helpful. You guys are, you know, engaging in this and continuing to engage in this. The land trade, potential land trade or large land sales of the, in private development of these lands are a huge issue. Two items we believe are important to consider as I close out. First of all, we think more time should be allotted to addressing this issue with a possible extension of the moratorium going on. And it's really difficult. I mean, you can see right here tonight, you know, trying to, trying to get a whole bunch of people together on a Zoom meeting, but we are in the middle of a pandemic, and it is a little bit more difficult to get work done under these conditions. And the second thing is, and Judy's talked about it, and Deb talked about it, but formation acceptance of a coalition to work with IDL, kind of a citizens group, but it includes the, you know, organizations, it includes the council, the commissioners, and others that would like to be involved in this. So in closing, I'd just like to say the American poet Gary Snyder wrote, "Nature is not a place to visit. It is home." Well, these lands are our home, and we'll work together to protect them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Judy and Debbie. I think we'll take some time, probably have some good questions for each of the three of you, certainly for your group, but we'll start with county commissioners and I'll, I'll let you manage that.
Let's start. Al, do you want to start? Do you have any questions for the group?
Well, I think it's very noble, you guys, what you're trying to do. I'm really impressed by your eloquence and your desire. I've felt the same way about a lot of the valley over my lifetime to see some really wonderful places that have been privatized and not necessarily lost, but lost to the public access. One of the issues that we've talked about on the board was, you know, Dave, Dave has brought it up numerous times, was maybe a levy for, for some of this funding to help, you know, secure some of this ground from development. And the big issue I have with all of that is that I have a road department that needs money a lot sooner than, than I think this issue needs money. And I don't know how do, how do I wrestle with that? And I don't know how do, how do I wrestle with that, you know, not only personally, but politically with the constituents here is, is there's so many priorities in front of this, I don't know how to get to this first. So I need some help with that.
Dave, do you want to jump in?
You bet. I agree that we have some priorities that we need to look at before we start trying to raise money for this. But I also do think that the county is in a good, and the city for that matter, is in a good position to kind of be the stewards to start raising some of this money. We have, as El mentioned, the opportunity, we could set up a levy. There's bonds out there right now that are relatively low interest rates. And then one of the other things that we've been trying to figure out is, is whether or not there might be some money available through like Land and Water Conservation Fund, which the city or the county could apply for. I think actually the county could apply for any of those funds, but I think the county and the city both are just, right now, in a great spot where we can, we can kind of help pick up the reins. And I think it's going to take a lot broader group of people than just the two entities to raise the kind of money that we're talking about, but I do think it is possible, El. And I do want to say that, you know, I think it's a priority that we look at any and all funding options for acquisition of either buying the land outright or, you know, as far as acquiring some leases on some of it, so, or conservation easements.
And I'll jump in with my thoughts next. And I really appreciate, you know, all of the groups that are coming together to work on this conversation because Pella is so important, PLT is important to be at the table, the city and the county. We do have a united voice, and I think a united voice is going to get us a lot farther with the land board than it is if we try and do things individually right now. So I think trying to come together and come up with what are our common goals, our common ground, put that into a letter format and take it to the land board so that they see we do have a united front here. This is important to our region. It's important to our water quality. It's important to our quality of life overall. And they have the ability to impact that. And so we need to make a common statement and a common goal on how we would like to have, to see joint efforts in managing this as we move forward. We've been talking a lot at the commission about, you know, I think the public will be open to some public funding structure with this. But this is a lot of money needed immediately. And so we have to look at all options and what they will listen to, you know. Is there potential for leasing some of this ground and put a 25-year lease on it? Giving us time in order to coordinate and collaborate together and find every funding source that we can find to do this. I think Jeff's idea of a common board where there's elected officials on it, there's citizens on it, IDL's at the table for common conversation is really critical as we move forward. So I like all of those ideas. I think it's really, it's an important time. This has woken up all of our concerns with land acquisition in this area. And, you know, the Wilkes Brothers probably should have woken us up a little bit more, but this definitely has captured everyone's attention and should. And so we need a long-term strategy. I think, you know, our planners and our elected officials all have to continue this conversation moving forward to figure out what that looks like. And I think working with Pella and PLT and all of those at the table that are trying to do conservation for our areas, great.
Thanks, Sheri. Let's hear from members of the state council. Mike, would you lead us off?
Yeah, I mean, I would echo much of what I just heard, and in particular, related to what Sheri said. So since we don't know what the proposed strategic plan is at this point in time, and echoing on Sheri's comment about the value of these stakeholders, starting with the city and county, but including other stakeholders like Pella, Payette Land Trust, and many others. It does appear that we all want to get a copy of the strategic plan that's proposed on November 17th, review it, and hopefully can reconvene another meeting similar to this after we've had a chance to review that. So I think it's great that we have everybody here together and discussing this. And I think that once we see the strategic plan, we'll be in a more, better position to have the next discussion. And hopefully, we can make plans to do that. And those would be my kind of key concerns. But I also want to, again, really appreciate what everybody has said. And yet again, it goes to the, an important issue with everything related to our public service and governing is that when we bring a variety of stakeholders to the table, we're generally going to find the best result. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mike. Colby Nielsen, what's your thoughts?
Oh, boy. I don't know. Too many thoughts. I guess first I'd like to, to thank Judy and Deb and Jeff for their really great thoughtful comments. And I want to say how much I really appreciate you guys being there and putting in the work into coming up with some good, good ideas and potential solutions. Yeah, the thought of our community being overrun is pretty overwhelming. And I really appreciate that we have a passionate community out there willing to invest their time and efforts into helping us protect what we have here. So that's the first thing. And yeah, I guess I'd kind of share Mike's thoughts that we don't really have a ton of specific information at this point as to to further strategize, and hopefully we'll be able to convene another one of these meetings. And I guess I'll just end it there and wait for some further discussion this evening.
Thank you, Colby. This is Bob. Real quickly, I'll add in a few key items. We've had, had some public meetings before on this topic, related topic specifically about trying, trying the land exchange or land proposal. And I believe, bestie Joey, had over 500 comments opposed to any land exchange of these lands around the lake. I think, I think we have a pretty good pulse on our community, just as the county has a good feel for constituents within Valley County, what they're thinking. This is a really big issue, and most, most of the comments that we heard, the people that were opposed, they were fine with responsible management, making money, for example, through timber sales and grazing, and had a high degree of trust in IDL to continue to do that. So as, as many of you have said tonight, including Pella, seems like getting together, speaking with one voice, as Sheri talked about, will probably be a very good way to influence the land board, and certainly the governor will take note. At the council level, we've, we've shown some interest in things like expanding Ponarosa Park. Perhaps some of these lands could be considered for that. I'm sure we would be open to learning more from groups like Pella and the Payette Land Trust about land banking. I think that's a very wise idea. And most of the ideas that we've heard about tonight seem like they have a lot of merit. So speaking for the city, we, we come into this with a real open mind, but yet we're realistic that our constituents do not want to see these lands spun off and sold. So with that, we'll go on to our fourth part of our work session, which is, oh, excuse me, the third, third part, which is an overview of the adopted comprehensive plan policies, development regulations already in place. And we've allotted approximately 15 minutes for that. And these are comp plan policies that were developed by county and city. I see Cindy on my screen in front of me, and I know Michelle is also joining us. So I'll turn it over to the two of you to lead us through that discussion.
So Michelle, do you want to take the lead, or would you like me to do that?
You can go ahead and start, and I'm happy to jump in after you.
Okay. I'm not sure how much of these lands are actually outside the McCall Impact Area and how much are within the McCall Impact Area. So I'll speak to those outside of McCall Impact Area. I gave you the excerpt from the Valley County Comprehensive Plan, so I won't read those to you. I think everybody had those before the meeting. It talks about growth and development while retaining our quality of life. It talks about the importance of the natural resources, economic development, recreation. It also directs us to work with the land board and communicate with them. I would say that if I had to work with the Idaho Department of Lands on endowment lands, that would be nothing, because we don't do anything on endowment lands. We don't have input on endowment lands. We don't issue permits, building permits, conditional use permits, or anything else. So if it remains under IDL, we really don't have much to say on endowment lands. So I know that back when we redid the subdivisions around the lake, we were told that the state doesn't have to follow local ordinances and local codes, that they can plat less the legal subdivisions according to the Idaho State statutes. That concerns me if they're going to do something besides just timber management. We are currently going through the RFP for the Valley County Waterway Management Plan, which will take care of some of those water issues if we can get buy-in from them. But at this point, well, and I don't know who knows how the Valley County ordinances work, but basically it's a performance-based, if they do sell it off, everybody will have to get a conditional use permit and go through public hearing processes and provide transportation, sewer water, and, you know, just your typical subdivisions or development codes. I believe, given the timeline that was presented by Scott Corkle for the November 17th land board meeting, that perhaps the board and the city should make a plea to them to give us time to address our concerns after the plan comes out. I mean, I liked Sheri's idea. Maybe they'll do a long-term lease with us in the short term so that we can have long-term funding to purchase these and make them conservation lands. So I think the first step would be to make that plea to them to give us time. I mean, everybody's sidetracked by the COVID right now anyway. Are there any questions for me?
Sheri, any questions from commissioners?
Not yet for Cindy. El, Dave, do you have anything that you'd like to have Cindy clarify for us?
Cindy, this is El. Let's advocate a little bit here. What would happen if, say, they ended up taking, the state took 200 acres of that and said, we're going to put this up for auction? And we, that's when the rest of us would have to really jump on this if we wanted to be able to even find a way to compete and to buy this ground. If we lose out on that, then anybody that buys it can pretty much do what, any kind of development they want, binding with our, our ordinances and our, our rules and regs, so to speak, on that development. So I guess what I'm trying to get at is, is I, I hope we're not putting the horse in front of the cart right now, because they haven't even seen the plan. And if it's 5,000 acres, if it's 200 acres, if it's 20 acres, we don't know what that is. And until we do, I think we're, we're kind of pushing air uphill here personally.
I agree with that. Anything would have to go through a review process in the incorporated areas, and a lot of that's based on topography, infrastructure, availability of services, transportation corridors. There's a lot of things to consider with that. But until we know what that plan is, you know, we are kind of premature. So that's why I say, I think, you know, the, the statement needs to be, we need time to look at this. And then I really do like Jeff's idea of putting together the coalition of the various people. I mean, because nobody says it like Judy Anderson says it. Hello, Judy. Any other questions?
Saying to follow up?
So I think one of the things just to keep in mind is, as Cindy mentioned, if the state goes ahead and becomes the developer, we have essentially no control over what will happen there. And that's because she mentioned they are exempt from local land use laws, both in the city and the county and the impact area. There are some benefits if it does go into private ownership, if, if that's the case, because then we actually have a local land use regulations in place. It depends on what obviously the goals are. If the goals are 100% conservation, we can't necessarily accomplish that through our zoning codes. But it sounds like, you know, the majority of the proposal will be in the McCall Impact Area, which is an interesting situation. It's, it's basically administered through the city, but it's county land. So we have a joint commission that reviews those applications. We have the same code in place for the city and the impact area. And it would go through, you know, all the public hearing processes. So it ultimately kind of depends, like Cindy says, what their proposal is. But I think, you know, in the case where we have IDL subdividing lands and being developers, that's not necessarily good for our area, because we don't, they don't necessarily follow local regulations or even sometimes, you know, fire codes and things like that. So they can kind of do whatever they want. So I think, you know, you have the whole spectrum from kind of preserving and conserving those areas. Then kind of that middle ground, I think, is going through a local land use process with the appropriate regulations in place. And then I think, you know, at the far end is, is, you know, IDL being the developer and basically not having any local control.
My question for both Michelle and Cindy, and maybe Dave and El, is we are ahead of our time because we don't know what their plan is. However, is it helpful for them to know that we are working as a collaborative group right now to identify potential problems that we see, concerns that we see, you know, something in front of them next week saying we do, we are working collaboratively in our area. We need more time to be able to review your plan. And so get in front of it instead of just waiting and them not hearing from us as a region until December.
Yeah, because Scott did say that, you know, they've, they're going to do their presentation, but the land board can change it Tuesday, you know, about the timeline. So I think we need to ask them to extend this timeline to give us a chance.
I agree.
This is Deb Faraday. I would like to echo the thoughts that Sheri had and what Cindy just mentioned, that I think it would be helpful if there was maybe a joint letter of some kind from the city and the county supporting that slow down process, give us time. There's, there's so much. This can be pretty complex. And, and Michelle, just to kind of answer, I don't know whether it's going to answer a question, but I've had a lot of conversations with Scott Corkle over the but I've had a lot of conversations with Scott Corkle over the past few months. And the lands in question that he keeps bringing up that quote kind of give them heartburn are the ones around Payette Lake, the wedding venue site, Parcel G. Especially these, there's some cottage sites that probably could be developed, because there's houses right next to them. I mean, those are probably going to be sold. They don't want to be in, it doesn't sound like the land board wants to be in the cottage industry anymore. They don't want to be dealing with that. But I'm in favor of just, you know, if there's, whatever kind of support you guys can lend, I think, to give the land board the idea that, yeah, you're in the loop, you've been keeping track of this, and at least maybe have some kind of joint general statement in terms of just, "We need more time."
I think the one thing that both the city and the county have, right, is the comprehensive plan, because it's adopted for the city and the county. And one of the items in there, if you look at the future land use plan map for the area north around the lake, it actually shows it as ag forest. So it's actually less intense than the current zoning. So, I mean, the idea that the community came out and said, "Our vision for this area is ag forest land." And I think, right, even in the comp plan process, people in some ways never really contemplated that that would be developed. They always perceived that as public lands, and they didn't necessarily understand it was endowment lands, it was state lands. And so I think that is like a really strong statement, that the community came out loud and clear that the vision for this area is not necessarily residential, and it's definitely not necessarily like a low or high density or anything like that. So I would, I mean, I would throw that out as, I think that's something that has been vetted by the public and vetted by all the governing boards already.
Michelle, I would agree with you a little bit on that. First of all, I don't think the state is ever going to be a developer. I don't think they're going to be the ones that build the roads and build the boundaries and the size of the lots, because they're competing with private industry, and the Constitution doesn't allow that. My biggest fear is that they're going to come back to Triton and say, "Hey, we'll trade you, you know, our 5,000 acres for your 25,000 acres that you got somewhere else." And then we'll be dealing with private industry on this. I don't ever see us having to deal with the state. When they came to us years back and told us, didn't ask, they basically told us that, "We're gonna start selling all these leased lots off in an auction process." And that's exactly what they did. And the same thing is happening in the leasing part of their business, especially in grazing leases, that they don't really care how you feel or how the local population feels. The Constitution demands that they make as much money as possible off this land, and that's their guiding principle. So I really think this is going to come down to who can afford to buy this if they decide they want to sell it.
So can I poll council? This is Bob. Let's hear from city council. Questions for Michelle, comments, or for Cindy Herrick? Let me start with Melanie. I understand you've been able to join us and have some questions and comments.
Hello, everybody. Sorry for my technical difficulties. What I'm curious about right now is if we, as a city and county, decided to do some sort of zoning, especially around the lake, or in any of the cases of lands that could be used in this for specific use, and they got, they went to auction, or they were traded, or sold, or, you know, obviously traded or auctioned, would our zoning hold up?
Michelle and Cindy, are you able to answer that?
Yeah, so if, you're saying if IDL either did a land exchange or sold off to a private developer, would they have to adhere to our zoning?
Exactly, especially if it were a recreational-based zoning that did not allow for any residential or commercial-type building.
They would have to adhere to whatever the zoning is at the time that they make an application.
They could request a rezone, however.
They could, but what we would do is look at the future land use plan map. And ultimately, the county commissioners would be the final decision-makers on that. But really, that future land use plan map is the guide. So if, for example, they were asking for some different density that was more intense, so say they were asking for a medium-density residential zone, basically, you would have to look at the future land use plan map and say, "Is it consistent with what that future vision is?" They always have the opportunity to ask to amend the future land use plan map, but it has to make sense, right? We just went through, you know, a two-year public involvement process and have a relatively new comp plan. And so it wasn't, like, the future land use plan now says, basically, it's a less intense use than what's even currently zoned. So, yeah, it would be really hard, I think it would be very difficult to justify any sort of upzoning.
So is it, I mean, could it be somewhat of a last resort between the county and the city to consider some sort of zoning change that would prevent usage on those lands? That, I mean, specifically in terms of what we're talking about?
Yeah, that's kind of a question for our attorney. When you start talking about like downzoning, there's some kind of questions about, are you taking away like the value? Right now, that ag forest land use designation, we don't actually have a zone that correlates with that. So we'd have to probably write that ordinance first. But I don't know if anybody on the phone, if Bill Nichols is on the phone, wants to address a zoning change as it relates to downzoning or not. Is Bill on the phone? I don't see.
I don't believe so.
So, Michelle, it sounds like that would be a question that you and Cindy could follow up to help us on, because I think where that was leading to is like, could all those acres that we have talked about tonight be put into ag forest? And would that help in terms of if it was spun off into private land?
Yeah, we would have to talk with our legal about what the risks in doing that would be, so we can get you that answer.
Thanks. If you and Cindy could research that for us, that would be really helpful.
I can't hear Sherri, what she's saying.
All right. And would that have to be then actually become city? Because the county doesn't have that zoning at all.
In the impact area, it's zoned according to the city plan. What is that ag forest zone, Michelle?
Sorry. My computer's about to shut down, losing battery. So it's a kind of a combination between low-density residential. It kind of depends on where you are, but generally, low-density residential.
So depending on the specifics of that, that may or may not meet the needs of people that have commented in the group that we've talked to tonight in our constituent. You know, if it's like one house per acre, that wouldn't meet their needs. If it's one per 40 acres, it might. So we'll need some further work done, but I think we need to move along. Melanie, do you have any other quick questions? If not, I'm gonna call on Mike.
No, thank you.
Thanks, Melanie. Mike, you're up next. Questions?
Thanks, Bob. Yeah, I can be brief. I think, one, I feel great comfort with the group here and all of the points that have been made. I think, one, in particular, I think Cindy has driven home that's very important, is one of the outcomes of this meeting, while it seems like a very simple thing or small item, but is nonetheless that I think that we do want to at least go to the land board and request it's suitable time for us to review and respond to their plan once they issue that. So if, in fact, we get that on the 17th, that we do need time to be able to review that, consider options, and have time for input. And that time for input would be not like five days. So, you know, potentially having six months to have substantial time to be able to review, evaluate, provide input, again, to slow down the process. If they're looking to have a finalized plan by January or February, that's pretty tight. So I think that's probably one of the big takeaways here, is that, and because a lot of the other items that we're talking about, I think, as Elte has clearly stated, is, at least in my interpretation, is that, you know, we don't have the details yet. So we need to see what the strategic plan is. And once we see what they're working on, then we can respond to that. But we need time to respond to it. So it's, what I'm hearing is that seems to be, there's probably some level of consensus there, and that's where I would be coming from. Moving on down, once we get that information, yes, there, you know, when we look at what our current zoning is on that land and also related to the future land use plan, you know, if the lands were sold off or exchanged, or however it went into private hands, if, based upon what Scott said, which is that he's talking specifically about the lands which are within the impact area, then at least we do know, maybe can have some comfort that we would have say, and have public process related to any development proposals that could come if that all happened. But again, as has already been said, is that's kind of putting the cart before the horse right now, because we don't know what their plan is. But I certainly would favor, strongly favor, that we request time for review, and that time would be months, not days.
Thank you, Mike. Colby, what's your thoughts on that, on that very important topic?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if I really have anything to add to it and right in line with everyone else. Feel like we need to be able to convey the importance that we've got a whole community working towards finding solutions on this. And we would like to have some time. So that's all I got.
Thank you. So Sherri, I think we've hit on a really important item. And the last item is discussion and direction of staff to finalize a letter. So let's talk a little bit about the timing. Did you envision, and Valley County Commissioners envisioned, a letter going in before the 17th? Or are you talking about after the 17th?
Oh, I think, and Dave, you can respond to this, but Dave was planning on attending that meeting with something in hand to bring to their information. And Dave, you can speak on this, but I just think that we were doing a letter stating, "We have a collaborative, we are working on a collaborative process in Valley County." And, you know, talk to that. Dave, you want to add to that?
You bet. So, yeah, I was gonna say, I think like what I had envisioned and what we talked about, kind of the end goal for the meeting tonight was going to be the crafting of a joint letter, if that was acceptable to both groups, you know, that said just exactly what we've been talking about, that, you know, we do think that we need more time once this is out, so that we can review it. You know, the idea of a collaborative process with some of the citizens' groups, I think, is something we might want to include in there. But, yeah, that was kind of the end goal, was to craft a letter between the two groups and give them some recommendations.
So, Dave, what, I'm not looking at a calendar. What day is that? Is that next week you're talking about going down to the meeting?
The meeting is on, yeah, the 17th. So, you know, regardless of whether it's in hand or, you know, we submit it prior to, it's just something that, you know, shows them a unified front that says, "Hey, we're concerned about the future of these lands, and that we do want to take some extra time to review this." You know, an extension on the moratorium for leases and sales and exchanges in the meantime, I think, is another critical component of that letter.
So let me ask, let me ask my staff. I know they're, so Michelle and Annette, I know a little bit about your leave plans for this week. Seems like that's a, seems like that's the, I agree with the timeliness that Commissioner Bingaman and Mopin have discussed with us. Will you be able to support me on that, helping with the letter? A review and some language to make sure that city agrees? By the 17th?
Mayor, this is Annette. I'm actually going to be out of state, and I'm in transit right now, just following this on my phone. So if the county could prepare a draft letter and email it to us, I'm happy to work with you remotely to help you get that signature, or they could email it to Bessie Jo to help with that if everyone's in agreement on the key points tonight. But I would need somebody from the county staff to draft something, unless, I don't know if Michelle has time to do that. But my guess is you would probably, if we had something before Friday, that when you're in the office on Friday, it could get finished and provided back to Commissioner Bingaman, so you could take it with him Tuesday. Or if we had it Monday, I don't know your schedule, Bob. I'm not physically going to be back in the office until Thursday. So, Michelle, I don't know if you or Bessie Jo want to chime in on how we can make this work.
Yeah, I'm happy to help however I can. I'm in the office this week.
Well, let's shoot for Friday afternoon, having something ready, Michelle and Bessie Jo. And we'll, thank you, Annette, for clarifying that. I think we can do this. And I think I'm gonna poll council real quickly again, but I think what Commissioner Bingaman outlined, we're all in agreement on the council, but let me verify that. Colby, I'll start with you as council president. Did you hear Commissioner Bingaman's kind of outline for the letter? And do you agree with that?
I do agree with that outline. I think it sounds good.
Thank you.
Good. Did I miss the presentation on water quality and recreation impacts, or?
No, you did not miss that. We can go back to that. But I wanted to make sure, there was a lot of interest, you probably heard on the phone, a lot of interest in this joint letter. So I wanted to pin that down and make sure that we knew we had a strategy for that.
I'm on board with all of it, I think.
Thank you, Colby. Melanie, you on board with that?
I certainly am.
Okay, Mike?
On board.
And I certainly support that, Sherri, so. All right, we'll work together, and I'll be in the office Friday. Bessie Jo will be able to help me, and Michelle, you'll be able to help me. And we can email or phone, talk to Annette, and get this, you know, get our input into the joint letter with the county.
Dave, do you want to start that letter? How do you want that letter to flow? What's your preference?
I can put together some of the points that we talked about, kind of like just some bullet points to send to Michelle and Cindy, if they're gonna spearhead it, or to Michelle and Bob, so that they can include that in the draft.
That'll work. I just want to make sure that on Friday, that everyone, you know, all county commissioners and all council gets a chance to review it, and they feel comfortable with it.
And we do have a special meeting on Friday. And we can add this to the agenda for approval. We've got to canvas the votes on Friday morning, so.
Okay. Now, as to council president, Colby Nielsen's question, I don't want to overlook, item four is a Item four is the, is a presentation on the water quality and recreation impacts. Do we know who is going to provide that to us today? Item four on our agenda?
Uh, Mayor Bob, this is Annette. Um, I, I recall, I think Dave mentioned that he was going to speak to that Commissioner Bingham. Um, we didn't have an external person lined up for that.
Thank you, Annette. So Dave, if you have some prepared comments, we'd love to hear those.
Uh, you know, so, sorry, I'm having a little trouble with my internet connection here, but, uh, you know, there were a couple of things that I just wanted to bring up as far as the, the increase that we all saw in the recreation. I mean, we've seen an increasing use on the lake and the areas surrounding the, the lake over the last few years. But, um, you know, it was compounded this year. It was an exponential increase that we saw. And I think anybody that was out, you know, on these lands, especially East Side Drive, um, the areas around Little Payette Lake, they saw the number of campers out there. They saw the number of people that were recreating out there, whether they were just going down for the day to stand by the lake or swim or paddleboard or whatever it was. But we saw a market increase in the recreation this year. And unfortunately, we don't have any kind of sanitary facilities anywhere on that side of the lake. So there's, there's an obvious and, and unfortunate conclusion that, um, or side effect that, that came out of that this year. And there was, there was a lot of human waste left behind and on the whole side of the lake up into, uh, you know, the camping areas that are off of East Side Drive. But I mean, even really close to the shoreline. So we have an increased use and that is going to have an impact on the water quality, you know? Um, I believe somebody else mentioned earlier, we're in the middle of this RFP for the water, the lake management plan right now, um, you know, city and we're called drinking water. And we've got some very serious water quality concerns. And, and that's just close in, you know, echoing some of the stuff that Judy brought up too, is that the water that's coming out of Payette Lake is also water that's going all the way through the system into the Snake River. So there's irrigation and there's other folks that are drawing water out of it. Um, you know, but the, the consequences of large scale development, clustered development or, you know, higher density development on East Side Drive, I think is going to have some additional uh, impacts on the water quality. And I, I think that's something that we just really want to be looking at as we start moving forward. So, um, you know, really to be brief, those are kinds of the things that I've been thinking about. I've talked to a lot of the groups that are here tonight, a lot of the other folks about it. And I think the priority is, is to start addressing some of that use and abuse over there on that part of the lake or that part of the lakeshore. IDL has never offered to put up toilets out there. They've never, um, shown any interest in even trying to regulate the campgrounds that are out there. So we have, we have people that are living out in the woods, literally. And it's something that we do need to address.
Dave, that's, I, I agree. I've observed those same things. And I think we've talked about it as at city council meetings. Do, could you weave some of that into the letter at an appropriate scale, you know, just that topic?
Absolutely. Yeah, you bet.
I would appreciate that. Council, you in agreement with that?
Yes. Um, yeah, Bob, this is Mike. I, I would say in agreement, but I, it seems that this initial letter should primarily be focused on the amount of time that we have to respond, review and respond, rather than necessarily getting into too many other items. I think if we could get the Department of Land to give us, um, time, that would be the most important thing.
Hit on that really hard. Thank you, Mike. Colby, your thoughts?
Yeah, I, I'm in agreement. I, with both Mike and you, your request. That I think that it, it would be appropriate to, uh, highlight, you know, we've got multiple things to highlight here as to why we would be requesting additional time. And I think that's one of the, one of the components of it. So I, yeah, I mean, I don't think we need to dive real deep on, on that, but I think that that's, uh, you know, adds, adds to the reason why, why we're working on what we're working on.
Okay. Melanie, you good with that?
I am, um, I, I'm sorry, I have one more comment. And, and, and that would be that, you know, um, I'd be curious to see what Nathan Stewart had to say about the, um, additional, um, traffic potentially to that side of the lake through even our town with additional development. And, you know, honestly, I, I'm in agreement with everything I've heard at this point.
Thanks, Melanie.
I would add one statement because I think, um, I heard somebody say, you know, those lots that are cottage sites that are on the lake probably would make sense to just go ahead and sell those. But really we have very little public access to Payette Lake. And those cottage sites are, um, could be critical corridors, you know, pathways down to the lake for the public. So I would say that we try and concentrate on all of it and not, you know, state that, um, those cottage sites, you know, could be ones that we would be willing to negotiate on. Cause I do think we need additional access points to the lake.
Well, what I meant, I agree Sheri, and when, when the council reviewed the 530 letters, um, from the public, um, some of them were outside our community, but, but you know, they, they all commented on this Trident proposal. They were tracking it the same way you were. It's like access, all of those spots are important that they not be put into private hands. So I think that should be captured in the letter, some, something like what you said. Well, I think, go ahead, El.
Mr. Hasbrook, I'm just sitting here thinking and I'm wondering if it would help our cause any if Dave included those 500 comments in somehow as an appendix to his letter to the land board. I think that, that holds a lot more sway with those kind of guys. Can you see that? Just an idea. And then the other thing I want to suggest is that as soon as we get this plan that comes out, uh, we get back together, or so next week sometime and, and all of us sit down and go through it again, just like we have tonight.
Annette, you were going to comment on the 500 comments?
Yeah, Commissioner Hasbrook, this is Annette Spickard. Um, after we held, um, I had the presentation from Trident at the city council and we received all of those public comments, we did package them up and submit them to the land board for their record. And so they have already received those. So you could in the letter just say, you know, uh, you've already received all of these comments previously. Um, I can go back in my email and figure out what the date was that I sent those in to the land board secretary, if you'd like. Um, but they did get those.
That's great. That's great. I think that will help our cause a lot.
Cindy?
Yeah. So Dave, I would hesitate, um, expanding too much on the problems we have with the IDL lands right now as far as human waste and water quality, because it might open their eyes to needing to get rid of that sooner than later. Because it is an issue and problem for them now.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I don't think we need to take a deep, deep dive on that, but I think more it was just, um, you know, addressing the increased recreation and impact that we've seen out there.
Well, I, I think we have a pretty good game plan, plan Sheri and commissioners and council. And I appreciate people working hard on this and making it timely. Cause yeah, we, I think we have a lot of, a lot of passion on this subject and it's, it feels like it's just being rammed through, you know, pretty quick. So let's give it our best shot and see what we can do, have something ready by close of business Friday that we agree on.
Thank you all for the hard work. I know everyone is very appreciative.
And Dave, I was going to say, the sooner you get us the points, the better for me, just from a workload perspective.
Yeah, you bet. Michelle, I'll try to work on this tomorrow and get something to you towards the end of the day tomorrow.
Great. I just want to make sure that everybody, it has time to circulate and everybody has time to weigh in on it. Which takes a little, little time.
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for hosting us and allowing us to be here this evening and participate.
You're very welcome. Thank you for including us. I think, I think the council really values working together and we do recognize that we'll have more influence working together. All right, um, council, you good if I pick a, um, ask for a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
All right. Could someone please make a motion from the council to adjourn?
Mike, motion to adjourn.
Could I have a commissioner second that motion?
I'll second it.
Sheri second it. We have a motion and a second to adjourn tonight's meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay. Hearing none, we are formally adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.